Here.
Robert Cameron, Director.
Here.
Justin Charlie, Director. Marcus Hyatt, Director.
Here.
Tim Letts, Superintendent.
Here.
Okay, summary and overview of agenda, Superintendent Letts.
Thank you, Chairman Barrett. First, I would like to apologize for not being able to be there in person. I have been isolating since this weekend, since after two and a half years of avoiding it, COVID has finally caught up with me. So I'm dealing with COVID right now, but I'm still well enough to to be at this meeting virtually. And before we continue, I would like to thank Becca for helping me prepare for this and our great tech team for making sure our technology works as well as it does after we had a bit of a trial and error with it before the board meeting. So thank you, everybody, for making this meeting possible. Taking a look at our agenda for today, after our time for public comments and delegations, we'll have the Gichiogama Debajamoon Report or Superintendent's Report portion of our meeting, which will include all of the reports from district cabinet coordinators and administrators. When that is concluded, we will enter into our consent agenda for today's meeting. Under the consent agenda, the board has 23 items to approve and accept today. While this is a large number, this is not unusual for a board meeting just before the start of a school year, because there are many details to attend to as any school year starts. In fact, the last five items on the consent agenda, Agenda Items S through W are new additions to the agenda that have been added just since Board Book was published last week. This is due to the fact that we are working hard to make sure everything is ready for the start of the school year during a very challenging time when it is extremely difficult to find people to fully staff our schools. Each item on the consent agenda is routine, including the five new agenda items, and they include actions relating to the hiring of new employees, approving of leaves and resignations, approving grant awards, and out-of-state travel, as well as the minutes from the last two board meetings. After the consent agenda is approved, we will then move into the few regular action items on the agenda. This includes approving bills and wires in the amount of $3,481,852.45, as well as approving out-of-state travel from October 5th through the 8th for three of our Ojibwe cultural staff to attend the NIEA convention to Oklahoma City. This last action item is also a new addition to the agenda since Board Book was published last week. Next, the board will move into the miscellaneous portion of the agenda where we will have the second readings of four district policies up for approval. We will then adjourn our August meeting. Now, as we move into the approval of our agenda this afternoon, one of the first orders of business will be that we need to approve of the five additional consent agenda items, Items 7 through W, as well as the new action agenda item 9B. Thank you.
Is that added on? Whereabouts is it placed on the agenda?
They're on here.
Yeah. The approval.
Yep.
Oh, we didn't make a motion?
Well, we just made a, yeah.
Approve the agenda with the additions.
Yeah. I'll move.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion by Nelson, second by Thomas to approve the agenda for August 24, 2022. Through the discussion. And that's we're adding the new stuff on there.
Yeah, I just thought there had to be a second.
Is everything to approve adding?
But that's all right. It works.
Yeah, I mean, we were proving it, we're adding, we added them, so we're proving, right, I mean, additions. S through W.
And all of those should be on different colors of paper next to your agenda items, yeah. Each one is a different color.
All of those are today. I posed
and all of those should be on different colors of paper next to your agenda items, yeah. Each one is a different color.
All of those are today. I posed other comments and delegations, we have any? I believe so. The report, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Barrett. My report is fairly short and succinct this time around. The month of August, as I highlight my report, I'll bring out the highlights. We've had a very busy month with numerous meetings and training opportunities for many district employees and for me. A number of people have completed a behavioral threat assessment workshop. I'll get into that in just a bit. That training was provided by Navigate 360 and gave a number of our staff members training on comprehensive school threat assessment guideline protocols, which is a system of assessing behavioral threats to the safety of our school environment. The training was conducted in two levels over 30 or a couple of different weeks, and 30 different employees attended the virtual sessions. Something else that I should mention is that that a C-Stag training is all about using a decision tree to assess whether or not certain situations are a threat, as we learn from many previous school tragedies. In hindsight, people will often say, I should have seen the warning signs. We should have caught this before it happened. When we hear about a threat that has been made, or a student comes forward with a comment or something he or she has seen online, we can then use a decision tree to help us determine how to respond in order to prevent a threat from being carried out. So I'm pleased that quite a few people in our district have taken that training, and that means we'll be able to incorporate our new knowledge on all of our school site threat assessment and safety teams. Finally, I should mention that on another note, that our district leadership continues to explore creative ways to recruit and to retain staff. We have, still have a severe shortage of employees, but as you'll see in Dustin Hinkley's report, we have been able to be creative and to do some movement, and we have been able to find some new staff members by reaching out even further with our employment notices. So it's been a challenge, but we've been able to, we think we're ready to start the school year with the great majority of our positions full for the school year. I'll continue to update you as the year continues, but it looks like we'll be able to start the year with most positions in place. Thank you. If there are no questions, I can move on to the Business Manager Report if you'd like.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. From Willie, he would like to make sure we're aware that he has been busy with biweekly check-in meetings with their security coordinator, our food service coordinator, transportation, building and grounds coordinator, along with human resources. He's been busy working with the following trainings, trainings in the transition to the new Medica health insurance program, as well as working with Region One, setting up employee time clock and leave reporting in the Smart ER system, as well as working with the MDE Special Education Finance and working and learning on how to reconcile error messages received when submitting financial data to the MDE. A reminder that the statewide primary election was held on August 9th. There were 11 candidates for school board on the ballot, and the top eight are now moving on to the general election in November. Willie would also like to have you know that the district was awarded a $280,000 emergency connectivity grant to help students stay connected to their learning. So the funds for that we're receiving in that grant will be used to purchase 700 iPads, which will be a welcome addition to our technology equipment. Finally, all of the 2022 Pay 2023 levy data information has been provided to the Department of Education. The proposed levy will be on the September 2022 board agenda for your consideration at that time. That wraps up the highlights of Willie's report. Any other questions about his report or the July finance reports? If not, I can move on to Genu Gijic's report. All good?
All good.
Okay. A report from Dr. Genu Gijic. Would like to make sure you're aware of how successfully the summer culture camp was run this summer, and I can attest to that. I was able to do a lot of visiting of the programming taking place over July and August. The summer culture camp, it finished, they finished it all up, and the camp ran four weeks, including some learning in language, fishing, canoeing, moccasin games, lacrosse, painting, beating, medicine bags, and other crafts and arts. In addition, for some of the older students, they had a canoe trip to the Boundary Waters canoe area, and Dr. Genu Gijic went with on that trip, where they took high school students to the BWCA for five days. The students really enjoyed it, and they indicated that they would like to go again next year. So next year, Genu was working on trying to take twice as many on trips next year. Finally, the canoe build was successfully finished. They finished building a birch park canoe with three Red Lake student apprentices and other youth workers helping, and they launched the canoe on August 17th at the Narrows. And that's a wrap-up of the very successful summer school report. Any questions?
You guys have a written report on it? On the last canoe? You guys got it written or?
79, page 79?
79?
Yeah, page 79.
I didn't get that one, sorry, I'm rolling.
I seen it on Facebook too, so they showed the student.
Oh.
I didn't know it was something.
Okay, yeah, there's not one in here, so. Okay. I don't know if everybody got it. Okay. Anybody have any questions, sir?
They did tip over, that's good. They launched it.
Right. Nope, it held up, it held water and didn't tip over.
Yeah. Ready?
Okay, can move on to the next one.
Okay, the Director of Special Services. Dustin would like to let you know that for special education staffing, very fortunately, we're recommending three hires for special education teachers and at least five hires for special education para professionals. Assuming all of them are hired and accept the position, we'll be functionally, although not fully staffed in special education to start the school year. We're still stretching in a number of ways that require us to think about things in out-of-the-box thinking, but we'll continue to provide high-quality special education services to every student who requires it. Two of our seasoned para professionals have been and will continue to be providing orientation for our newly hired paras so that the paras can hear firsthand what the expectations and requirements will be in their new positions. So thanks go out to Linda Lucia and Mary Thunder for agreeing to take on that important work. Couple more highlights of Dustin's report. We will continue to work with AdSys grants and Title 4A and an A&amp;I Achievement and Integration funding sources. However, given the small dollar amount of the BASK Project Grant, in comparison to many of our other grants, we've decided not to apply for those funds for the coming year, but instead to focus on our Staff Wellness Grant, which we receive for the coming year. Under the area of teacher licensing, outside of any hires at the August meeting and beyond, we have just three teachers remaining who are in need of appropriate licensure to start the school year. All three of them have submitted their applications and their documentation to Pelsby, and we're waiting word from Pelsby regarding whether or not they need to be providing additional information, or their licenses can be granted. And finally, under the highlights here, I want to point out that we have these online school psychologists, and they are services provided from outside the district from around the country, and all of them visited Red Lake last Thursday to see our facilities and to meet our other special ed assessment team members in person. This was kind of exciting because they traveled from places like Washington State, along with the East Coast, Central Minnesota. It's not required that they visit, but they're coming in on their own, or they came in on their own volition without being paid for anything other than their time on-site. And this, we believe, demonstrates a lot of commitment to the Red Lake School District. So we're excited, as is Dustin, that this may be the first year where our special ed team can fully function in the way it was originally envisioned. So along with that, the World's Best Workforce Team looks forward to presenting to the school board at a future meeting regarding the World's Best Workforce Plan for this upcoming year. And finally, I want to mention that under the area of training, three of our sped teachers participated in a Train the Trainer Program focused on maximizing the effectiveness of para professionals. And Dustin's working with the three of them to determine how we can bring their learning to the remaining case managers in Red Lake, and how they can use the material in supporting the effectiveness of all para professionals in their own classrooms. It pretty much wraps up his report. He does want to also let you know that CPI and CPR training are taking place this week, and that will carry all the way through tomorrow. So lots happening in the special education world. Any questions?
It says that Para Professional Orientation Day was today. Will there be another one? Because it looks like we have some possible hires on on the consent, so will there be another orientation for them?
You know, they, yep, they will plan. Usually, when we onboard new people, we provide a way, sometimes it's after the school day, or we do have next week still with our various workshops, but the plan is to make sure they know what their responsibilities are and that they are given some training and orientation to the start of the school year. So we'll make sure that gets done.
Question, they said that Trainer had significant technology issues. Was that on his part, or was that on ours?
It appeared to be on his part. You know, that happened with another training I was in, a bunch of us were in yesterday. The training was taking place on the I want to say somewhere in Washington State, and they were having bad weather. But we dealt with it, and that just means that every now and then there's a glitch or the video freezes, but we plow through. So it may extend the training by 15, 20 minutes, but we get through it. But we do believe it was on their end. At least that's what they were saying, so. Any other questions, or should we move on to human resources? I think that's what's next, right?
Questions, move on.
Okay. The report from from Ashley this month. She would like to make sure you're aware about the Engage Campaign. That's the Infinitec Program where staff receive online training every year on areas such as bloodborne pathogens, harassment, mandated reporting, right-to-know issues, confidentiality, and other issues such as bullying. And the staff are all asked and required to complete their training by September 6th, which is the start for the day before the start of the school year. The onboarding plan that has been created by multiple individuals within the district has been very successful, greatly benefiting our new staff. I was participating in that a couple of weeks ago for the new teachers, and I found that to be very helpful, not only for them, but for me as well. It provides the tools for new teachers to be successful and provides resources to aid in student development. We have lots of great new certified and non-certified staff members who've been hired for the school district for the upcoming year, and they all get to be able to participate in some form of onboarding. Packets for substitutes, both licensed and non-licensed substitutes have been sent out for last year's substitutes and for recruitment of new subs. Subs are needed for just about every area, virtually every area, teachers, cooks, secretaries, bus drivers, security guards, and custodians. And as of today, we still have a few open positions. We could still use a special ed teacher, a school psychologist, or intern, an interventionist, and bus drivers. Fortunately, we've been able to fill, as you'll see later in the agenda, TLC instructor, an elementary 512 or content teacher, and an English Language Arts teacher, and the para professionals that we need. And that wraps up the highlights of Ashley's report. Any questions?
And that number one, that Engage Campaign, will maybe done by September 5th, September 6th?
They should be, yeah. What they are is anywhere from 15 to 30, 35-minute videos that we can watch online. We listen to the training online, and then after the training, there's a quiz. And there are seven or eight that are assigned, and I've been able to take care of, I believe, six of them so far, and those six took less than, I would say, two and a half hours, two to two and a half hours for me to complete. So people have done this before, and they know, and they've been knowing it for quite some time what the deadline is. So Ashley will check. You can go in and check to see who has done these, and if there are still some who haven't, we can send out reminders. There's no absolute deadline. If they haven't finished by the 6th, they can be reminded to get it done the next day. It's not mandatory that, I mean, they can still, we can still start school, but we do ask that everybody try to get done by that deadline. Anything else, or should we move on to building and grounds?
Fun.
Okay.
Building and grounds.
Few points from Chris. The Red Lake Elementary Complex Fire Suppression Project is complete, except for correcting a few inspection items. This will be done by the 29th of August. The custodial staff are working on final cleaning, and staff will be able to prep their rooms and have been able to this week, and should have been all set to go by the 22nd, by Monday. Chris and his team have been working with WSN Architects and Martin Mechanical on a design to replace the 1950s steam boiler at the secondary school complex. Martin Mechanical is currently working on specs and project scope to bid in December of '22 with board approval. The project is projected for fiscal year '24. They're continuing to work through the Red Lake Elementary System Complex Intercom Project with Johnson Controls, and all the JCI components are in. The rough ins are in progress, and the work was completed about a week and a half ago, so that's all done. They've contracted with American Time and Tovich Electric out of Vemiji to install an emergency response system in district classrooms, and you may have heard about this before, but Tovich will have power for each unit in each complex by the end of this week. There's hard wiring and data wiring with Cat V, Cat 5 hanging brackets and monitors, and that will be starting soon, and the project will have to be finalized over MEA break while people are out of the building to finish things up. But this is something that was part of ESR 3 funding, and this will be a wonderful new addition to all of our classrooms and offices where, in the event of an emergency, whether it's a weather-related emergency, tornado, or some kind of intruder alert, messages can go out to every classroom and every office using these emergency monitors. And so that's what they're doing and working on right now, getting these monitors hooked up and wired throughout all of our buildings. The football field lights will be complete and online by this Friday. An app is available to control lights with a smartphone, but we're not gonna get that app to too many people, just those who need it, Nolan and his team. The parts and labor warranty for the lights are 25 years out, and again, this comes from ESR 3 funding. Few other notes, the district's capital projects for fiscal year '22, '23 is substantially complete. Chris is working on punch lists and closing out projects currently, but the great majority of capital projects are wrapping up for the year. Chris is also working with principals to move some teachers' rooms and scheduling summer work. Pretty much everything there is being wrapped up as well, including preventative maintenance on HVAC equipment. And I should point out here, at the last meeting, one of you asked, I think it was maybe you, Jack, wanted to know where we were at with our HVAC and our air filtration systems in all of our buildings, and I did follow up with Chris on that question, and he let me know that we are at cutting-edge status right now as far as schools are concerned. So everything in all of our buildings are up to par and cutting-edge right now with air filtration and and health and safety guidelines. Few other points, item eight on his report. Oh, okay.
That would be.
Thank you, Roy. Yeah.
It's cold.
Yeah. To turn the heat up, right? Um. There have been repairs made to worn graphics in early childhood gymnasium, and they've been completed as of over a month ago. Each complex is going to receive an exterior LED sign, and these signs will be installed and operational by the middle of next month. And again, the district HVAC control project is underway. We just gotta turn the heat up, right? And Chris and his team reviewed some requests for proposals and have chosen Safety First Playgrounds for our design partner on the new playgrounds at the Elementary and Panima complexes. Our first committee meeting was held last week, and there will be a couple more meetings on that, and I hope to make a couple of those as well. So he's been busy. But that wraps up his report. Any questions, additional questions? If not, I move on to Andrew's report, Food Service. Okay. Andrew's also been busy with summer work and getting ready with a new menu for this new school year. Current issues, he's working, I want you to know that the meals for summer school have been going very well. Both trucks for delivering meals for next summer are under construction and progressing with little to no delays. All school-related food service applications, they're known as CLICs applications, have been approved, which include fresh fruit and vegetable program, the SNAP program, milk. summer school for next year, and CEP. So that's all good. All that paperwork is out of the way. He and his team have created new menus, and they've been posted on the website for this coming year. Free and reduced applications have been mailed and are available online with the link posted on our website. And all of our equipment is in good running order with no issues. Looking at the future, the food trucks will be ready in September, and we'll be partnering with the Department of Education for a really cool program called Harvest of the Month, which will bring more opportunities to the district to increase fruit and vegetable education and consumption, and I'm happy to report that the M D E is being culturally responsive here, and including some indigenous fruits and vegetables like wild rice and squash and corn and other items that I think our students will appreciate, and our families as well. And that's the wrap up for Andrew's report. Any questions on that?
I'd like the same. I like the way he does his report.
Nice and concise, yes. I'll let him know that. Not as long-winded as mine, right? Okay, ready for transportation report? Again, summertime can be pretty busy for transportation. Summer work on the buses is almost done with bus inspections scheduled for today and tomorrow. And Corey Peterson, Robert Dudley, and Kevin Patterson did an awesome job with doing some fixes and repairs to the buses, so we're thankful to them for that. And Darrell and Cook have been popping in to do some office work, so we are grateful for that as well. The third session is going on for summer school with four drivers, and that'll be wrapping up the end of this week. Happy to report that we have one driver in CDL training right now, and when that driver completes the training, then we'll be able to register that driver with the Federal Motor Vehicle Safety Administrator, and that driver can schedule a road test with the DMV. And that's it for his report. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to Don Brun's security report, if that's okay. He would like to make sure you are aware that cable has been pulled for exterior cameras now at all three buildings, so that will be up and running by the time the school year starts, if it hasn't already. We will be training all of our guards, and that has been scheduled for our workshop days in the very end of August, the 30th, 31st, and September 1st, the same time teachers are back and paraprofessionals for training workshops. Work shirts for guards have been ordered. And I can point out a change since he submitted this and put it in the board book. He says here that we're still waiting to hear on the second S R O. We have heard word now, and we will be meeting with Director Burns and the new S R O to go over expectations and guidelines for the upcoming school year. We'll be doing that on Monday. And then on some sad news, we had six windows. This is disappointing news. Six windows broken out at the elementary school a couple of weeks ago. We filed a police report on it. We were unable to capture any video because it was dark outside when it happened, but a BB gun was used to break those windows. So that was, that's always a disappointment when we have vandalism in our system. But those windows have been repaired. Any questions on his report?
There are going to be lights where it was dark?
You know, they're working on that. And in fact, they're, my understanding is usually there are some lights in that area, but they weren't where the kids were standing, which is too far away for the lights to really capture. But they look like they were medium-sized kids, perhaps middle-level to young high school, but we can't really say for sure. But maybe directing the lighting further out might help that in the future.
Just wondering.
Yep, good question. I'll double-check with Don on that. I'll follow up.
Oh, what was the sorry, I was on the phone with the one other security company.
Oh, yeah.
Was there lights in that area?
No, that unfortunately, that's one of our darkest areas. Like, it's so tucked far away. We don't have lighting on that side except for the new addition, and that, that didn't cover that area.
Can they add some?
What's that?
Can they add some lights there?
Yeah, I'm sure we could add lights. That would probably be a Chris Borg question. I'm sure it's feasible.
I'll follow up with Chris, and either adding lights or taking the existing lights and maybe making them larger and extending the range and the scope of that lighting. So I'll check with Chris on that.
Good news is that since the incident, there, I've noticed that there has been more routine checks of the building back there now with law enforcement. So they've been actively patrolling the school since that incident.
Is this Red Lake Elementary?
Yep, Red Lake Elementary.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
Hey. There's nothing else. We can move on to the Red Lake Elementary. Okay, Red Lake Elementary Complex Principals Report. First of all, the primary PK two report from Principal Amanda Norman. I won't go through every bullet point, but she wants us to know that they have been very busy with training. In early August, they were planning, planning for beginner garden, and first things first in first grade, step into second for second grade, and ways to start the school year off to a good start, which means that, you know, taking the first two weeks of school and making sure that everything that they do aligns with the age level of the students as they discuss what the school year should look like, what expectations are, and making sure we have a positive and progressive start to the school year with behaviors, transitions, and everything like that. The good news is that they hosted a kindergarten drive-up roundup on August 8th, and had 38 families attend, and that did result in a number of new kindergarten enrollments. The PK two SLT team met on August 9th and 10th to collaboratively plan on how they're going to best support students, and along with a strong focus in their Jibway Moore, they'll be integrating character education into our classroom settings and school community. And they're looking forward to building upon the previous Jibway Moore initiatives that they've done in past years. And then coming up on August, August 31st, the PK two staff will be participating in a staff bonding and team event at Black Duck Golf Course. Moving on to grades three through five, Principal Amber. Six homeroom teachers met in June and August to plan teaming across multiple grade levels. Three additional homeroom teachers met in July to plan teaming in math and in reading. The three through five vision is to facilitate customized learning that supports the world's best workforce goals and to remove the barrier of grade levels. And really, what these two bullet points are focusing on is that, you know, a third grader may not always be at third grade level or a fourth grader, and sometimes we have to mix and match some of the groupings and have mixed groupings to meet students where they are at academically, in math, or reading, or socially, emotionally. And so working on that, we will make sure that we can meet students where they're at in order to help them learn best. Students will continue to be exposed to grade-level material, but also receive the challenges that they need when, when above grade level and extra support when they they'll be given the challenges they need when they're above grade level, so they won't get bored. But the support that they need when they're struggling and somewhat below their grade level. And we'll receive this consistently through support of a highly collaborative team of teachers. The third, fourth, and fifth grade leadership team met, and they're very excited to start the new year with the engaging activities already in place, and then adding a new maker space, which aligns perfectly with their three through five vision to meet students where they are at. They have three teacher professional development days planned for the end of August that align with the work that they've been doing so far. So, and in case you're wondering what a maker space is, it's a place that brings joy back to learning. It includes, you know, it allows students to transition from being passive learners to hands-on, active learners. We have to do this for our students. We have to change the way we provide enrichment and innovation to prepare our students for more. In general terms, a maker space is a place and time for students to create, to tinker, to learn how to do something new, to be challenged, have fun, explore, problem solve, to image, to build, to draw, to write, basically to create things. A lot of technology and art is involved, a lot of STEM and STEAM is involved in maker spaces. So that's exciting. Exciting that they'll have this opportunity at the Red Lake Elementary Complex. So they've been busy preparing for the start of this school year, and I would like to thank them for that. Any questions?
That was good.
All right. Moving on to the the Panima K eight Principals Report. Again, staying busy. Panima School staff members have started to trickle in during the last couple of weeks of August. Some people are coming in to get acquainted with the building and to get back into their rooms or acquainted with their rooms, while others are getting their rooms ready for the start of the new year. You can see some of the new staff members listed there and changes that have been made. Aaron would like to point out that, and he's correct, we have not had an uninterrupted school year since the 18, 19 school year, and there's been a lot of regression damage to learning that's taken place due to the time away from physically being in school over the last three years. They'll have a different look this school year with K three really focusing on individualized learning, again, similar to what the Red Lake Complex is doing. In order to best meet the needs of the students, they're implementing some multi-age classrooms as appropriate for math and reading. And he's very happy with all of the work that's been going into this process, and he believes that that Panima School is prepared for a strong year of learning and making it fun with students. The first teacher paraprofessional contract day is August 30th, and on September 1st, the Panima School will be holding a meet and greet for the community from 11:00 to 6:45 in the evening. And then the student school year will begin at 8 o'clock in the morning on September 6th. And everyone's excited to be welcoming students and families back for another school year. Again, thank you to that team for getting a lot of work done to prepare for the school year. Any questions there? If not, we can move on to secondary, if you'd like. We're almost done with reports. First off, summer school. They're trying to, a new way of organizing summer school with sixth through eighth grade students. For the first two weeks in August, their big idea was water, and their essential questions were, how does the lake take care of us, and how do we take care of the lake? Students learned about water raft ceremonies. They wrote short plays and performed them with puppets in a theater that they created themselves, all while integrating math and science through measurement and experiments, and the role of water in our health, and doing some watercolor painting as well. For the ninth through 12th summer program, that started on Monday, August 15th, running classes through the August 25th, taking place 8:30 to 2:00 every day, and students enrolled in English, math, social studies, and art classes. And they are ready for school. Custodial staff has done a great job making sure the building is ready. And in grade six through eight, they will be implementing the first four days, a program similar to beginner garden or first things first at the elementary. Like those programs, they will be teaching students about school and school expectations. They'll focus on building relationships and building community. The rest of it is pretty much highlighting enrollment, and let's scroll down to the second page here under teen support. Vicki will be restarting the teen health clinic, which will be open during the next school year with days and hours defined eventually. More details to come. Another push on social-emotional learning, which is important in grade six through nine. That'll be implemented during those first four days of school. The first week of school will then focus on building relationships with our students and building community in classrooms, teaching students expectations, hoping to help our students feel more connected at school and to see fewer behavioral issues. We're on track to continue our truancy diversion program with the courts for secondary students and families, hoping to build in more interventions with the elementary students and their families this year. So it's been a busy time, but that pretty much wraps up the the highlights of that report. Any questions on that? Okay. Can move on to Nolan's report under activities. Sports started on the 15th of August. It's fun to see students back getting ready for their first competitions and in practice. Summer rec went very well with a total of 35 students. Did take them to the water park for their fun day. Kids had lunch every day as part of the summer lunch program whenever we have that available at the high school complex. The football lighting, as you heard earlier, is almost complete, and it'll be ready for the first home game on September 1st at 7:00 P. M. First day of school coming up fast. He and his team are excited for a new school year and a new sports season. Any questions? If not, we can move on to Becca's report. And just double-check, is Becca still there in case anybody has questions?
Yep, I'm still here.
Great, okay. Couple of things that I would like to highlight is, is one thing that's really nice is the increase. Well, first of all, overall engagement, because it's summer, understandably so, overall engagement with digital and social media communications has gone down, but that's to be expected over the course of the summer. But both the number of page likes and followers have increased, and I had to double-check with Becca on this percentage, but they've increased by 13,000% and 667% respectively, from just between July 17th and October 16th, so just over a one-month period, which is showing that we're still growing as a as a webpage or a social media page, and growing for accounts. And that growing really accounts for how we're getting our information out to families. Page views were up 41% between that time. Panima is an exception. There's been a continued increase in people reached and post-engagements and page likes, but that's encouraging to see that we're starting to get more engagement and more connections with families out there. And you can see, I won't go into all the details, but you can see the analytics that Becca put in there in nice detail about the numbers of people reached and the people posting, people liking certain things on pages on Facebook at Red Lake as a district and the secondary complex, Red Lake Elementary Complex, and also Panima School. Becca also wanted me to highlight the fact that we're working, she's been working hard with a company called APTA G2. They're the ones who have helped design our website, and they're working on another program now to develop a communication app build-out for teachers and staff and students and parents. This app is called Rooms, and it will be launching this school year, and I've been able to see how it works, and it is really pretty cool. It's a great way, a very powerful and robust way to make sure we have strong communication between teachers and students and parents, entire families, to engage families. between teachers and students and parents and entire families, to engage families more easily and readily in two-way communication, to make sure parents are aware of how students are doing, homework that's missed, absences that are being noticed, things like that. And uh, this will all be housed within our district app to focus on our, you know, our website and our app, this app, this uh Rooms app will be the number one place to go for information. Becca's also working on branding projects for the district. One example would be consistent email signatures for all teachers and staff, and that will be rolling out at the end of August. She's been making sure that people are aware of who the new superintendent is, getting to know me a little bit through our website, Facebook, and uh making sure that I'm available for people who have questions or need to reach out to me, so. Um, item five, she has created alerts through Thrill Share School Messenger to streamline communications for messages to reach staff and families and in the event of issues like weather or other concerns. She's staying busy writing articles to be shared in Red Lake Nation News and taking care of other miscellaneous tasks to aid in administration or to help me out. And one example today was I needed her help uh getting this meeting set up virtually so that I could continue to be in isolation and still be at the board meeting. So thank you to Becca for all of her work. Any questions for Becca?
What was that uh thing you call ruse? That's probably two, two B.
Rooms, I think it is, right? Or like classrooms. I think that.
Classroom.
Yeah. It's an app called Rooms. And make sure it's, it's a great way for teachers to reach out to parents or students or vice versa. Anything else? Okay, last report. Technology coordinator. Um, they've been busy, Ken has been busy. Uh, they've had help desk tickets. Uh, they've closed over fourteen thousand to date, fourteen thousand five hundred. The help desk tickets are when people like me are asking for help, figuring out how to get your phone system up and running if it's down, or figuring out technology or connecting to a printer, things like that. There have been twelve hundred computers imaged, which means freshly redone, ready to go for the start of the school year, along with five hundred iPads for grades K through three. Uh, as you heard earlier, we're purchasing seven hundred more iPads with special E-Rate funding, and we are expanding uh the use of laptops into two third-grade sections as sort of a trial this fall to see how that goes. Um, and we're working on getting either brand-new or one-year-old laptops for all twelve hundred third through twelfth grade users district-wide. Um, they've been recycling older equipment and have received about forty-five thousand dollars back due to that recycling. And they're continuing to manage Microsoft Teams and Zoom across all of our schools and complexes, along with email, content filtering, SharePoint, OneDrive, and all Microsoft applications. And when you, when you stop and think about it, it really has been amazing what we've been able to do over the last two or three years with COVID and how we've been able to use virtual uh platforms to continue doing what we do. Uh, teacher rotation of laptops has been complete with sixty. Uh, new teacher onboarding was completed with devices being issued to all new teachers, and I was able to watch that happening. And uh right now, he and his team are reviewing a possible new device management system to replace Vision, and they'll be considering this for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The new digital signs, the one, um, the one I was talking about are the outdoor signs are on pace to be installed in the three locations in early September. And uh, right now, they were reviewing the need for Zoom next year. Do we need Zoom or can we get by with just Teams? Currently, Teams is used for grades four through twelve and for all staff, and uh they're looking at maybe Zoom contract to be reduced somewhat. Um, that's pretty much it. The rest is just a kind of a repeat of what they're doing, but they have been very busy. I pop in and uh add more work to their workload, but I'm very thankful for our really solid technology crew here in our district for all of their work. And they're very accessible, easy to contact. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we relied on them to make sure we were able to get our system up and running for this board meeting just before two o'clock today. So thank you to Ken for that. Any questions? If not, that wraps up our reports.
Consent agenda has amended to five additions.
Again, all of these items are routine and come to you recommended for positive action by me and by the rest of the cabinet.
Sandra used to go to California and not go.
I had a question about that at the board of chaperones for that.
Sandra?
What was your question, sir?
Who are the chaperones or who are the chaperones?
Um, I think we've gone to one, and that would be me. And then um, I would take four students.
I would like to uh thank Mrs. Keterlin for her work with uh the robotics grants. I mean, she has brought in, as you can see, quite a bit of funding. First grant, fifteen hundred, first equity, a thousand, and then the uh Apple and American Science and Engineering Society grant of forty-five thousand dollars. Um, I've been able to witness firsthand what a motivated uh and ambitious uh individual she is, a real go-getter, and I appreciate her efforts in this, in this area. Looking forward to supporting the robotics program this year.
Answer your question, Jack.
Well, it said two, there was two of them. That was. Oh. Say two. I said two.
It's got one teacher.
In, in the consent agenda, it says one teacher and four students. And then in my, in my original document, I had booked, I had budgeted for two, but I think that was an amendment we had made.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions around any other consent? Items, if not, we'll need a motion to approve, okay? Motion by Nelson?
I'll second it.
Second by Timmerton. Prove the consent agenda for August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Six oh. Action, well, I don't believe we need a call session for anything, so. Action items approved, bill and waivers for the month of July two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Sheriff Barrett. Everything there is in order, nothing out of the ordinary. Um, just need uh your uh second, or a motion and a second to approve that as well.
I had a question for Willie on uh page seventeen. Check number two eleven, seven, five, six. F X O, I don't know how you pronounce that, Z O, I don't know Z, but it's an X uh for nineteen hundred. Um, that has to do with uh Saint Mary's uh for, for their uh some sort of app or something like this or whatever. And page nineteen.
I am trying to find that right now here, scrolling down. Yeah, tricky, seventeen, eighteen. Okay, I'm on page nineteen right now, and um which line, I see, is it further?
Uh, I already moved on.
Hmm, got it.
Seventeen.
If you.
Uh, check number two eleven, seven, two one one, seven, five, five.
Okay.
It's just I never seen it before.
Yeah, if you'd like, um, is there someone in the boardroom right now who could walk over to Willie's office? We could ask him to come in and explain that one to you.
Yeah, he, he, I already asked him and he explained it. Uh, it was for uh the mission, Saint Mary's Mission School and stuff.
Yep.
Okay, so it's good. And then the second question I had was for page twenty-five of thirty-two, right at the top, uh, radio time billing. Um, that's for the radio stations in Bemidji, KBUN, uh, with whatever other acronyms they go by. And uh, said he's gonna try to get uh Red Lake the radio station in Red Lake here, see, because his ma listens to it and enjoys the country music they play once in a while. So he'll, he'll get around it. That's all I got. If anybody else has any questions.
Other questions or any motions kind of approved?
I'll move.
Motion by Nelson?
You approve.
You approve.
I'll second.
Second by Tom. Approve list of bills and waivers in the amount of three point four million. Almost three point five. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Hey, is this new one that was added? Uh, approve out-of-state travel October fifth through eighth for Dr. Gimli. Darren Inver, Robert May to the fifty-third annual N I E A convention in Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve. Prove, I'll, I'll move to approve.
And motion by Nelson?
Second.
Second by Darren. Approve out-of-state travel. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, miscellaneous second reading to amend following, following policies.
Thank you.
Four fourteen.
Go ahead, sorry about that.
No.
I was just gonna mention, yes, it's uh the same four that were presented to you last month, um, where last meeting for first readings, this is now the second of three total meetings. Nothing has changed uh in the language or any, in any way, so this is simply the second reading, and uh we'll have a third reading in September. But there, four fourteen mandated reporting of child neglect, physical or sexual abuse, four fifteen mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults, five twenty-four internet acceptable use and safety policy, and six oh four instructional curriculum, so. If there are any specific questions, we can field them, but uh since nothing has changed, and if there are no questions, we can go ahead and approve that as a second reading.
No questions. We don't need no action on this, so. Anything else? Any additions? If not, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
No motion by Tyler. Second by Thomas to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Yeah.
Adjourn at three sixteen. We're looking better. Over in sixteen minutes, nah, not even that.
Did it warm up at all in that room, or probably not, you're still wearing a jacket?
Free, I'm free.
Oh, okay. Winter, winter's not even setting yet. Turn the boiler off.
What is this line on?